Positive reinforcement. I'm going to call the regular meeting for the Cedar Springs City Council to order on Thursday, September fourteenth at seven oh seven P M. Please rise with me and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Atchison.
I am here.
Yes, you are. Mr. Gross.
President.
Ms. Hamel.
President.
Ms. Nixon.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Race.
President.
And Mayor Conley is here. At this time, we will move on to public comment. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment portion of the agenda. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like. Please note that we are recording, so you don't need to dox yourself if you don't wish. But if you would like a written response, we need to have your address with the clerk or the city manager at some point. Do I have someone who would like to speak? You have the timer?
Hi, Vicky Babcock. Most of you know me by now. I'd like to thank you first off for your consideration at the last meeting that we spoke to and that you did move ahead and send an offer to Solon Township. I appreciate that. I would request that you continue to work with Solon and find a solution. And in that, in that aspect, I would ask that you would allow Solon the extension so that you can resolve this situation. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Again, we appreciate the fact that you put Solon positions back on the library board as it should have been from the start. I read through the tentative agreement. And I find some of it troubling. Under the terms and conditions, it states the officers of the existing directors serving on the board shall be vacated on the day before the effective date, and each director shall lose his or her position on the board. I'm really curious about what that was all about, except that it said the mayor then appoints four members, which is a voting majority. And just another backdoor means to control the library board and appoint those who will vote K D L. The mayor already has her list in hand. It further says the mayor may remove any city-appointed director for any or no reason if he doesn't happen to like that person, which we understand personalities are involved. It's really obvious that more discussion is in order. We want the community library to remain community. Don't want one mayor deciding who is on that board. And a question that I had, and I will take up with the city manager, is I understood from the Library of Michigan that it is the library board that is supposed to be negotiating with Solon, not the city council. If that's, that came straight from the Library of Michigan. I think Solon deserves the ninety-day extension to work through this agreement, and I hope that you will all remember that we, the people, vote on the members of council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Donna Clark, your neighbor down the street. Later this morning, later in this meeting, you're going to be considering a contract for library services with Solon Township with new changes specifically sections four, seven, and eight, which one of those I think Patty has talked about a little bit referenced anyway. And Claire has asked me that she, that I would read a disclaimer from her. The research and resources are for informational purposes only and not for the purpose of providing legal advice. You should contact your attorney to obtain advice with respect to any particular issue or problem. So I asked her a question about what we're going through kind of here with the, some of the details, not much. But anyways, this is what she wrote. So, and I wanted to just say too, later in the meeting, you're going to be considering all of that. And she, as the library law specialist, had something to say that would help us move forward. And, and I do have a full copy of what she wrote to me that anyone can have if you ask me. The Cedar Springs Public Library, this is all from Claire, okay? The Cedar Springs Public Library was established via charter or ordinance as a section one city library. We all know that. However, this is something I didn't realize. Once the contract with Solon Township was signed, that contract changed the establishment or reestablished the library as from a section one city library to a section fifteen joint board library. A joint board library under P A one sixty-four has a governing board with the powers enumerated in section five of the Act and changes the board configuration from only Cedar Springs residents to a combination of Cedar Springs and Solon Township. At this point, the library is no longer a city section one library. The city and township have limited input for library governance. As a joint library board, as a joint board library under eighteen seventy-seven P A one sixty-four, the governing library board has the same authority and powers listed in section five of the Act, M C L three nine seven point two oh five. These are the same as the board has as a city section one library and include operational control, authority to determine and approve library operational policies and procedures. Include bylaws. The city should not be writing library governing board bylaws. This allocation of authority by the legislature indicates that the library board's role is that of the legal authority for the library, with the legal power and authority to contract on behalf of the library and the legal ability to determine the library's policies and procedures. For example, the city of Cedar Springs should not write the bylaws of the Cedar Springs Public Library without the approval of the library board. The law is clear that the board shall write its own bylaws. In summary, although a city has a bit more input in a P A one sixty-four section one library, a city does not have organizational control to make decisions and usurp statutorily bestowed authority of the legally appointed board. Ideally, both the city and the board should work together while respecting the authority each has regarding the library. And this is the last sentence. I understand that sections four, seven, and eight have been prepared by the city's attorney. It may be that if you proceed in adopting controlling sections like those four, seven, and eight, you could be leading the city into conflict with the laws of Michigan for libraries.
Anyone else?
Mary Gardner, Cedar Springs Public Librarian. I love my job. I love the patrons that walk through our door. And I want you to think about what it is that this whole big picture is about. As a council, as township, you're, you're all fighting over who does what. But what you're not considering are the people, the patrons. What I wanted to do was walk through this door carrying a big box, and in the box would be all of the library cards, the registration forms that everybody has filled out in order to get a library card. I wanted to lay it across the floor and let you take a look at how many people use our library on a regular basis. Reason I didn't was because if I dropped it, I'd be realphabetizing for a month. But the point being, every single one of those cards represents a person. And over half of those cards are Solon Township residents. Do you want to be there when we have to take the shredder and put one card in, one at a time, shredding all of those people? Because believe me, it's going to be a cry fest. Please don't make us do that. Don't make us shred those cards. Don't turn this into something other than people coming into the library using our facilities, our Wi-Fi, doing Zoom meetings, they're, they're teaching their kids. Do you know how many homeschool parents bring their kids into the library? It's not, it, it's, it blows my mind that this is even being considered to have Solon Township not be a part of this. I just ask that you think about the people. It's not about books. It's not about Wi-Fi. It's not about anything but the people who use this library on a regular basis. I had a woman come in from Solon Township today, her little kid's in a stroller. She said, it is unconceivable to me that this child could grow up without a library. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Ron Howell. I'm at four oh four Eighth Street. And I want to, I guess, to try to keep it light, report that your city treasurer is on the ball. She was in the office. I paid my taxes. She processed them through correctly. So I'm up to date on that. And I do want you to know within that there is a city, a city library millage. And there's just the two of us, but that's ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents, which is public record. You can all look it up. So I'm trying to think, we're, we're trying to resolve a contract. We're trying to argue or work out what is fair. So I'm trying to stay with facts. Okay, just facts. So between us, that's like forty-six dollars a person. So we start taking a look, and if the city share of the budget, that's just adopted and in place, it comes out to about thirty-two dollars a person with a population of thirty-six hundred. We have a voltage millage township, Solon Township, in the sense writes a tax or a check. And I think that's a lot of the confusion that goes on. We're doing a millage rate, somebody's writing a check, and how much is being contributed and what's fair and how does this work out? So I went back and Solon by the census is listed at six thousand four hundred and eighty-four people. Cedar is like thirty-six hundred. Okay? If you took that same per capita kind of approach that Cedar Springs is taking, Solon would be kicking in two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars because it's per person. And that's where I agree with you. We're talking about people. We're talking about, and for me, it's kids. My kids are gone. They're graduating from school. And when I went into the census, I started looking about populations. And here's Solon with a median income of eighty thousand, house values of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Children under eighteen in poverty, the census is saying four percent. Now I dropped down to Cedar Springs, forty-six thousand median income. Okay? These are from the census, please. If I got it wrong, correct me.
Right.
Children under eighteen, the poverty level for Cedar Springs is twenty-two percent. I'm fortunate. I have fiber. I have a lot of devices and computers. I can search. I can get the information I want. But what are those about those kids that need to go to the library, that need to use these facilities? And it gets real personal because that person right there helped my daughter get textbooks when she was going through school and check them out. Anyone who's been down that road sparring books in order to graduate from university or any school, thank you very much, Donna. So when I got down to it, I'm thinking all this is going back and forth. We're talking about a budget, trying to finance it. We're talking about people and population. And it just hit me, why are we fighting with all this millage and everything else? The library board, as a somewhat independent group, needs this much money in order to have a budget, and it's going to serve these many people. Let's divide that up and find out what it is per capita and let the budget divided by the population set the per person amount. Dear local government, you have these many people. This is your share. If you did that way.
I'll give you thirty seconds to wrap up.
If you did it that way, the city share, by the way, would end up being eighty-six thousand, and the Solon chair would be a hundred and fifty-three thousand. You can argue those numbers all you want, but thank you.
It's like flat. Yep. Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, you probably recognize me too, even with the mask on, sorry. I'm really concerned that you're having the city attorney prepare proposals and bylaws that are by Michigan statute illegal. Don't they know what the laws are? You know, why are you using my tax dollars to fund somebody's personal vendetta? I mean, this is just ridiculous. And, you know, I, I just can't believe that our city would do that, that you or city council would allow that to happen. I, I really hope that you will allow Solon the extended time for the contract to be, for the appropriate response and resolution so we can get this put behind us and that we will take away the proposal that, that you sent them. As Donna pointed out, sections four, seven, and nine, I think it was, eight, seven, and eight, are not legal requirements in there. You can't just for no reason at all take someone off the library board. That's illegal. If you look in Michigan Legislature, section three ninety-seven point two oh three, section three, it says the mayor may be, may by within the consent of the city council remove any member for misconduct or neglect of duty. That's it. You can't just take them off because you don't like the color of their hair, if you don't like the way they act. Too bad. You know, that's not a legal reason to take anyone off the library board. We have a very good library board. They're working hard, and theirs is the responsibility for running the library, not yours. You appoint the members, which are there already, and it's their job to run the library. And that again is another Michigan law that I looked up today. In section three nine seven point two one four. The governing board of the library or the library board is the sole provider of the running of the library. So please keep that in mind and don't try to work around, you know, come up with some backdoor way to get rid of people that you might not care for. And, you know, let's just keep things running like they have been. It's been providing a wonderful resource for our community, our entire community. And we're, we're all part of this community, whether we live within the city limits or just outside, you know, a few miles away. You know, we're all friends, neighbors, and family. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There are a few people on Zoom. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, and the mayor will call upon you.
I'm not seeing anyone. Moving on, we are going to. So the adoption of the agenda, do we need to add swearing in? Oh, C B D T presentation. C B D T presentation of site development project created by Calvin University students? Yes, absolutely. And I was at your meeting some time ago where we talked about this. How wonderful. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. I'm going to take about one minute of this and turn it over to these two who did the
Fabulous.
lion's share of the work. My name is Suspar, and I'm C B D T chair right now. It's a wonderful organization. We want all of you to come check us out at one of our next meetings. We are inclusive of everybody in the community, the wide community, wherever you're coming from, all over any township, the city, anywhere. And our desire is just to really focus on bringing people in the community together, community building development team. It sounds like maybe we just build buildings, but we have done some of that. But we really are about community building, meaning bringing people together, enjoying our amazing, amazing places, our community, not only the trail, but the amphitheater and the library and just all-inclusive and all the events that are put on by our many businesses. So without further ado, I'm going to induce Jake and Emma, who are here from Calvin College, through John Ensley, who works for Fleece and Vanderbrink. They were doing some student work through Calvin University. So they did a senior project for us as we took the community's ideas from a huge event we had around brainstorming what's next in our community. And they put together, using their engineering skills, some things for us. So without further ado.
And this will live on video for you going over, just so you know.
Perfect. Um, yeah, so I'm Emma.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a presentation for us? Yeah.
Do we have a presentation?
We don't have it quite memorized.
No, not all of it.
Almost. We did give it like seven times last year.
You're fabulous. I'm, in my real life, I'm a public speaking teacher.
Oh, great.
No, what I would say is you shouldn't be memorized.
Oh, yeah.
You will be more engaging if you're.
Uh, so just to introduce, there's two other members of our team. They're on jobs elsewhere. We actually graduated from Calvin University this past spring, so we're not.
Congratulations.
Our, we came up with a team name Rex, which stands for responsibly in Cedar Springs.
Could you please be quiet while they're presenting?
And we, we chose this name to kind of go along with the C B D T's vision of like creating enhanced spaces and creating space for community to gather together.
And those are our members. Our classmates who also graduated. Um, so our client, we went with the C B D T through John Ensley, who connected us. And we wanted to talk about next steps. So we're mainly looking at the park that is by the library. Specifically that we want to talk about this meeting, the fire barn that got tore down and what we could do with that space to bring the community together. We also did some parking, so because we know that can sometimes be an issue if the amphitheater is being used. And then culvert removal and a pedestrian bridge and then a historic feature where are our other parts of that. This is just a site plan. If you're a visual person, I know I am, so you can see where the feature design was, culvert removal, parking lot. And we thought about possibly doing something over the creek, but we ran out of time.
I appreciate the honesty.
Well, quick, quick gloss over quite a few of the other design things that aren't so important to the, to right now. But to start the project, we had to do a drone survey of the park. We were fortunate to, one of our team members worked with the company or works with the company that was able to provide a drone for us. That allowed us to get elevation data of the site so we could actually do the design work.
Oh, cool.
Um, so here's quickly the three spaces of additional parking that we proposed within our project. You can tell, so the top, the topmost picture is angled parking right along the, the road there in front of the, in front of the park. And then the bottom left picture, you can probably tell the library's up in the top right of that screen clip. And then the existing parking, of course, and then we added a couple more spots there just closer to the library. And then in the center of that space, we'll get to in a little bit, that's the space where the fire barn once was, and it became.
Fountain that you were.
So, so we'll get to that in a little bit of what we kind of thought that space could look like for you guys. And then the final picture is just a larger parking lot, a little bit west, just west of the White Pine Trail. That was a little bit more design heavy, but we'll skip all the boring details that you guys don't need to know. So. You can skip that one. And that one.
And. So this was, the culvert is going, it's the White Pine Trail right now, and it is, we're guessing originally from the train track still. And when we did our engineering surveys and stuff, it's actually doing nothing for the creek. So we were proposing that we take that out and put in a bridge. So this is just, let's talk about our engineering part that we did. So you can go to the next slide. This is the bridge that we wanted to put in.
Nappy night.
Yes. And this matches a bridge farther up the White Pine Trail in Howard City. So it would kind of be connected and a little bit more aesthetic than just a concrete barrier right now.
So to get a little bit more into detail about the feature where the fire barn was, we kind of didn't have a super clear direction of where we were going until we talked with the C B D T. We went to a couple of their meetings, heard a whole bunch of ideas for that space, ranging from restroom spaces to fountains to sculptures and all those things. Ultimately, we decided on a design. Aesthetically, you can see it here. It's basically a concrete sidewalk surrounding a central feature with a few benches kind of on the outside there, as you can see. And as part of our engineering design, we didn't necessarily go into too much detail about what would be in the center of this, although we did kind of pursue a design, try to pursue a design of some sort of train feature because of the railroading history of Cedar Springs. And Emma can talk a little bit about maybe the difficulties we had in that aspect too. But it is something that if you guys wanted to move forward with some sort of design, it, it would be one of our recommendations that you could do. But Emma will talk a little bit more in detail about it.
Yeah, so we, this was one of the big parts they're talking about the C B D T about because really bringing community and history back into it, kind of like how the amphitheater has some of the railroad odds to it. So our first idea was a train car, something going back. We actually, John Ensley has contacted some artists who would be willing to do some model train cars. He said the original one that came through here was quite ugly, so we would.
So maybe not that one.
Or something like a fountain and cedar trees for Cedar Springs. A lot, just making sure that whatever we put there is community built and not just we, don't want to just put a side. don't want to just put a sidewalk and benches. We want it to have something in the middle. So that would ultimately be up to the city, the CBDT of what would go in and at least provide some ideas and things going along for that. So this is just very much a preliminary. We did it in school. Um, we're gonna show you guys what the CBDT is about and how we could help them possibly in the future go about that message. So, yeah.
The rest is not important. Probably not even a right anymore. And then I think we do, some, somebody probably has the PDFs of our plans. If anybody wants to take a look at that, you can send it to whoever you want.
I'm guessing the CBDT people have it.
So, so they have those if you guys want to see our ideas. Um, like, like Emma said, they're not, we did them as college students. So they're not even remotely, probably close to buildable. They're as close as we could get them with our knowledge. Um, and we thought we did a pretty good job to be honest. Of course, the designs can be used as inspiration, not directly used as constructively, basically.
We just want to help the community as much as we can and that, we feel like we showed that with our project. So, yeah, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. You're, this is, you are on the agenda. This is not public comment.
So just to close this out, first of all, thank you, Jacob and Emma. Um, I just wanted to kind of bring this full circle. The CBDT, we work really hard with any organizations involved with loving our community and bringing people together. And it is a nonprofit. We work with the city, with the DDA, with the chamber, with the women's group, with anybody that's willing to partner with us and raise donations, um, from all of the above. And so we really want to row in the same direction. So we really work hard to make sure like if there's a city master plan and a new strategic plan coming out. We want to get on board together because we figure that, that momentum with not just people's energy and volunteerism, but with the monies that we can.
We're gonna be updating that this coming year and we very much want to make sure you're at the table.
So thank you. We just really appreciate, um, everybody in the community. We're probably seventy-five to a hundred people strong when we have everybody. Um, that's been a part of the CBDT for years. Um, it was started probably now twelve, thirteen years ago. I believe, and, um, has had just a great presence of fabulous community people with creative ideas, with knowledge, with skills that have donated time and resources and materials and all kinds of things to help. Um, just do amazing things in the community. So thank you for your time tonight.
Just to tell your students that one of the things when we apply for grants is we need to have plans. And while these might not be coy there, I bet they're close. And since they may know someone in Fleece and Vanderbrink. Um, I'm guessing at some point that could be a way that they tip into that if we're trying to go for a grant. So that could be wonderful. Cause that's how we've gotten a lot of the money to do a lot of those things.
Thank you.
So thank you. Okay, then we're doing the swearing in. We don't have any hearings, right?
Correct.
And we are not adopting the agenda until after we do the swearing in? Are we swearing in and like, what is the order of events?
You can adopt the agenda.
Okay.
And if you just want to take a pause after the consent agenda, I can just issue the oath, um, to miss land.
Okay. So at this time, I will take a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, we have an agenda. Moving on to the consent agenda, um, I need to add. Are we, are we pausing now?
Not quite yet.
Okay. So, and then I need to make a, a, an amendment.
The minutes.
To the minutes of the last meeting. Um, in reviewing the board packet for nine fourteen twenty, twenty-three, I found under public comment, my statement indicates the library would revert to a class two library. That is incorrect. I indicated it would become a class one library as evidenced by the memo attached from Claire at the Library of Michigan. It is possible this cor correction can please be made in my statement. Uh, thank you, Tony Owen. And it's Tony Owen, there's no S. So that is, please make that amendment. And then consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I have a, a correction to make on the, uh, last city council meeting.
Sure.
Um, Nancy Damon's name is not Diamond. It's D E Y M A N.
From Red, the president of Red Flannel.
Yes, ma'am.
So yeah, we kind of added her in.
Yeah.
And then, so at this time, I will take a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
There's second?
I'll second.
Okay, and since there is money involved, I will take a roll call vote. Miss Ash, Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hammer?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. So at this time, we will swear in our new finance director.
I will.
Congratulations.
And thank you and welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on to action items. Item A, a motion to approve ordinance two, four, six, and ordinance to amend chapter thirty-two, article two, division one, section thirty-two dash one five nine entitled zoning district regulations, generally zoning map of the code of ordinances of the city of Cedar Springs. Second reading rezoning White Creek flats at one, four, three, zero, zero, White Creek Avenue. So this is the second reading for the apartment complex on the four twenty-five and the brown, it's not a brown field. It's a it's a something grant, something bank, land bank, something, something.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Were we going to, uh, move, uh, H Library Services Agreement to the top of the action items or?
Um, well, we already have this one out there. So how about we do it next?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be better.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Like to make motion that we, uh, act upon that, uh, seven A as presented.
Okay, any discussion on this? I think we've talked about it.
A lot.
Ad nauseam. And we're, they, I think they've already broke ground. No? Okay. I thought I saw moving dirt around up there. No? No? Okay. I mean, not that there would be anything wrong with moving dirt around. So that would be a thing. All in favor? Would you like a roll call? You would like a roll call because it's a zoning change. Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Ms. Hammer?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
And Mayor Conley votes yes. And then we are going to move item number.
H.
H.
I don't know if we can since we already adopted that.
I think we can.
You can if you take a vote of the council. It's not the best practice, but you can.
Okay.
If you have a full vote of the council to make that change.
So I'll make a motion to, uh.
Move item H.
Item H to B.
B.
Mm-hmm, on our action agenda.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Okay.
Let's move it along.
Any discussion?
I think would, uh, be more convenient for these folks unless you want to hang around with us for another hour, hour and a half.
We are fine, right?
Our cookies.
I did not bring cookies. I should have brought cookies. It's been a minute since I brought cookies. So any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Do you need a, a unanimous vote to move it?
Just majority vote.
Okay. So, item H is now item B. And.
I'm gonna get to my.
I'm having, yeah, I'm having a minute here.
Yes. I get my pages are.
Somehow I don't have a packet open. I have two agendas.
I have the paper one if it helps.
That would.
So Library Services Agreement and Solon Township request for a ninety day extension. I was gonna say, I have, I have mine right here. Okay, she can.
I, I found it. I was, I was the technical issue.
Okay. Darla, and we've had much, I want to say that, um, I was sending emails to attorney at stupid dark thirty this morning before school and to the mayor pro temp.
Yes.
And to, and to Rose and to a variety of people. And then, um, the attorney took it over with our city manager to talk about this, um, request from Solon had, after we had presented them a contract. And this was the conversation and.
I would like to review publicly the draft that I personally delivered to Solon Township September fifth.
Please.
So everybody knows it's in our packet. It's on our website if you'd like a copy. So, um, from the city to Solon Township, um, there's twelve points, fourteen points. I just want to highlight, I'm not going to say every word. Um, the Solon patrons may have access to use, um, library services at the Cedar Springs Public Library, Community Library. Um, just as if they were a city resident equal. Um, all rights and privileges of the Solon patrons to access or use the library are subject to the terms of this agreement. And any uniform rules or regulations established or adopted by the library's board of directors or any party providing library services to the library. The library shall have a board of directors consisting of seven members. Um, with staggered terms. I'm not going to go into the detail of that. It's in, it's in the agreement if you want to see it. It just makes sense to have staggered terms. The offices of the existing directors serving on the library board shall be vacated because the existing contract would no longer exist. This is a new agreement. So new board members would have to be appointed. It, they can be the same board members, but a new appointment would be made with a new term, so on and so forth. The city would appoint four members to the board. Solon Township would appoint three members to the board, full seven member board. Um, in order to ensure the independence of the library board from the city and township, the township shall not appoint any member of the township board to the library board. Nor shall the city appoint any member of the city council to the library board. The township and the city shall not appoint any immediate family member to the library board. Definition of immediate family member is I got it. Hold on. Parents, siblings, spouse and children. Um, this, if this agreement is terminated as provided for herein, the terms of all directors shall end on the date of the termination. The city, the mayor of the city with the consent of the full council may remove any city appointed director for any reason or no reason at all following a hearing. And the same thing with the township. The township can remove anybody they appoint after a hearing. The township and city shall take action to remove any library board director appointed by the representative legislative body that does not comply with any applicable law, including the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Any vacancies in the library board of directors shall be filled in the same manner as the original appointment. Any vacancy shall be filled for the balance of the unexpired term. Um, the Solon Township agrees to pay a hundred percent of their penal fines to the library board. The township shall pay in year one, the equivalent of six tenths of a mil based on their taxable value. Year two, eight tenths of a mil. Year three, the equivalent of one mil. Um, so state aid and penal fines from the township are contributed to the library in addition to the township's contribution that I just explained. We are proposing a three-year agreement. And finally, um, if either party violates or fails to perform any of the terms or covenants in this agreement and such violation or failure is not cured within sixty days after written notice from other party, it will constitute a default. Upon a default, the non-defaulting party may, in addition to pursuing all other rights and remedies provided at law or inequity, terminate this agreement effectively immediately upon written notice to the defaulting party. That's the agreement the city provided to Solon Township on September fifth. On September sixth, a letter was delivered to my office from Solon Township requesting a ninety day extension. In consulting with our attorney, he drafted a letter giving the council an option to suspend the current termination. Um, thirty days, sixty days. Solon's requesting ninety, but it's your decision. Um, if you like this idea, we just need approval to sign this letter. And I would deliver it to Solon Township tomorrow. So that's to make everything public. There it is.
Thank you.
And that will live on our website?
Yep.
Like everything else? Does someone want to make a motion?
Let me see.
I will make the motion as presented, so we can begin to discuss it.
We, we have to put in.
Do we have a motion that's presented?
Yeah, the motion doesn't have a timeframe.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I would like to make a motion that we, um, um, agree to a Solon town, agree to a sixty day extension, um, with Solon Township so that we can discuss it.
Is there a second?
So we're amending what's on the.
There's no, there isn't a timeframe in the motion that the attorney gave us. It's blank.
The same, but the, the motion itself on here.
I'm just making.
Is indicating ninety days. And if we voted on that, then we could discuss it and alter it as way we need to.
Is that, would you, you want to change?
Just to get it started for discussion.
I'll, I'll support your motion.
The motion as Ms. Leach, Atchison said with ninety days.
Yeah, that's.
That's the way it stated.
Jerry's motion was.
Yeah, the language from the attorney has it blank.
Now that, that point, if we vote on this and it's accepted, then we can now go into discussion. It's not accepted until everybody have unanimous, unanimous vote on it, right?
No, there's a motion in a second and then we discuss.
Yeah.
That's what I just said.
Right.
Discuss it.
Okay.
Who wants to start?
Well, you know, cheers for being mouthy. So, okay, so first of all, kind of a, uh, how we got here and, uh, in a way that it was posed to me from a community member. And something that in the, in the fray, you know, I forgot to follow my own rules. So one of the, one of the things that I do in, in my job is I, I try to assume good intent. And I try to assume innocence. Nobody wants to do a bad job. Even if you don't like the job they're doing, they're not trying to do it wrong. So back in way up, the library was underfunded. We were trying to think of a way to help that resolve, um, the current contract with Solon was what it was. Um, and an option, not necessarily the option, but an option was KDL. When it was brought up, assuming innocence and good intent, Solon saw this and says, wow, what a tax jump for our residents. Maybe this isn't something we're on board with. And swallowing hard and assuming good intent, um, you know, exploring other options with Elgoma. you know, exploring other options with Elgoma. And maybe we didn't receive that very well, because there were some complications with that. There were some reasons that that wasn't gonna be a great solution, but they were exploring and so were we. So, the long and the short of it is, um, I think both boards wanted to do what's right, but in a way frustrated each other. Um, trying to look out for their community and, and, and so it escalated. And so, here we are. Um, now, we have to account for the human in us. And the human in us says, right now, they really don't trust us, and we really don't trust them, and that's just where it is, that's human. So, I, I do want to have an extension. Do I think ninety days seems kinda long? I mean, I, I don't know what their relationship is with their attorney, but our guy's pretty Johnny on the spot, um. And I, I'd be more in favor of a thirty, nobody wants to kick Solon out. That's really not whatever wanted to happen here, the whole thing escalated. Nobody wanted to, to get our friends and neighbors kicked out of our libraries, it's their library too. And it was the intent of the community when we built it, that it be their library. Our fight was over how to fund it. And then there were some misunderstandings, and we all stood our ground trying to protect something. So, I, I'm, I'm in favor of an, an extension, I'm more in favor of a thirty day, boy, that was a long-winded way to get to there. Okay, that's what I got.
Okay, anyone else?
I've, I've.
I see Renee thinking.
Okay. I voiced my opinion to a couple of the board members, uh, even prior to the meeting. I'm not opposed to the thirty days, but I hate to have it dead end there. I would like to see it with a possibility of an extension of another thirty days based on way it's progressing. If there's no progression, then it's just the thirty days and it's it. I don't think ninety is necessary either. But I do believe as long as the negotiation's going on and there is a forward motion, we need to keep that going, but it can't go on forever, we need to get this settled and done. I don't think there's any of us on here that want to see the relationship between the two communities, our community, the two governments, go away. So, the only difference I would have from this and the thirty days is the caveat that there could be dependent on progress that's being made. And that would be the only thing that I would bring up for discussion other than.
Just to, um, 'cause this was one of my questions with Darla, when we were talking about ninety days, I said, what is it that they need that they don't have? And the argument was that, um, one of their people is on vacation.
Hunting, I heard hunting, maybe they have some plans of.
And, and I, I appreciate that, but.
Hey, everyone has.
But four months is a long time. And we need to be able to hire a library director.
And we need the board in place as it will exist with both our new appointees and Solon's new appointees, so we can hire one.
Yeah, so the library, so the library board should hire a library director. And under the current structure, Lakeland will not post that job.
Yes, and, and are, they had how long?
We set, well, we asked open-ended with a, we don't have enough money for the library. There's this huge inequity in how we fund. We need to have more money from Solon Township.
But in a.
But I'm just, I'm going through the timeline, that was last October.
But also when we.
Then severed the contract, because we were told they didn't feel that the library needed more money.
Yeah.
We then severed, and the contract was the contract. So, we severed the contract to start a six-month negotiation to get a new contract on April thirteenth.
And so, we've had six months.
Five months at this point.
And every time we got something back from Solon, we set a special meeting.
Or we did it within.
Did it with, within our month.
I would contact our attorney and say.
Always responded. So, dragging it on another ninety days, what's that gonna do for us? Because we've always responded to, to, um, the agreements they've sent us, but it took a long time for them to even send us an agreement. And we told them when we severed a contract that we wanted to be in negotiation that whole time. So, that's why there might be a problem with ninety days, is the fact that, okay, then you're gonna take ninety days no matter what we do. So, we gotta keep the ball rolling, we gotta get this settled, we gotta get the boards, we gotta get, we got, we do have to find, we have to get a library director in order for the library to be able to run. Those people that are at the library right now are doing an awesome job, but they're overworked. And we need to get something established here, we need this library to run like it's been running before all this came about. We want it to be what it was for our community. We want the library, I don't think anybody here is against the library, against providing services to children. That's what we want, that's where it all started. We needed to fund the library and we needed to keep it going. That's where it started. No decisions were ever made about doing anything, we tried to work it out with the county or township, we've tried to work it out. Once again, I don't know, things happened where there became this whole big conflict, but I don't wanna give more, I don't wanna give ninety days, it's too long. It's too long, we gotta get this settled, it's been going on a year. We, we've gotta figure out the next step to take to make this right for the community.
Would, so, are you calling the question to take the vote on the ninety-day one on the table? So, there can be another vote?
Yes, I would, I would.
Calling the question.
Call the question.
So, this.
Sorry, I pretty much said.
I just took it out. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
You voting yes?
Uh.
She called the question.
For the ninety days.
For the ninety days, I just wanted to make a, a, a bit on the discussion.
Well, she called the question, but okay.
For the ninety days.
Right, so. Okay, Ms. Atchison, no. Mayor Conley votes no, Ms. Nixon?
No.
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 I wanna make sure we're voting no on the ninety days.
Motion that is on the.
No.
Okay. At this time, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for a, uh, thirty-day extension after, of course, uh, our last day is, uh, October thirteenth, which will also give sixty days automatically for more negotiations, whatever. So, if we can't settle this in sixty days, I, I just can't believe we can go any farther with all this.
Support. Okay, so, any discussion?
Rebecca.
Ms. Powell, I just wanna make sure that I have your motion as you stated.
Okay.
Motion to issue a thirty-day extension after October thirteenth.
Yes.
To November, do we, do you need a date? November, okay.
To the next council meeting, would that be?
I think it's thirteenth, and I think our council meeting is the ninth.
Is our October meeting also the thirteenth?
It is.
Okay.
Well, it's the twelfth.
It's the twelfth, okay, very good.
It's the day before.
Oh, okay.
I have your motion, Ms. Powell, was there a second for that? I apologize.
Lisa, Ms. Atchison. Okay, any discussion?
Sorry, I said too much on it, but.
You're just fine.
I certainly hope we can, uh, we're just so close right now, I think we can, um, solve this, and I never thought in my life that our attempt to make a fair, um, mileage towards our people and to, uh, finance our library would cause such a ruckus. I thought, I thought people, our citizens that we represent would be happy to see that we want to finance this library in a fair and equitable way between the, um, township and ourselves, and that was our main goal. And to keep our library, not the poorest library in the whole Lakeland co-op, it's ridiculous, we shouldn't have to be that way. We're supposed to be a number-one, first-class library, and we can't do it on, what was it, thirteen dollars a person?
That's what Solon, Solon was thirteen and some change, we're thirty.
Two-ish.
Two-ish and some change, depending on how you.
We have po, half the population, we have half the taxable value as Solon.
Hair, hair more than half.
But yeah.
Yeah, right in there, so, um.
We're like thirty.
We have to protect our library with a fair and balanced tax base, and I think we've accomplished that.
Yeah.
And also, um, the agreement they sent to us that we responded to, um, we didn't change a lot in that. Um, there was only, there were only a few things that we tried to change to make it fair and make sure that that entity, that library board is a li, it's, it's separate from us.
Mm-hmm.
Without having the relatives and the, and the board members, um, on there. So, I think that, I, I think thirty days is plenty, which would give them, like Rose said, another sixty days, so.
Anyone else? Ms. Nixon?
So, yeah, back to my long and rambling rants. Um, we're, we're back to, they don't trust us and we don't trust them. Right now, there are Solon Township board members on the library board, which feels problematic to me.
The state would agree.
Well, in any case, it feels problematic. Um, and as you have stated, when they have said us something, we contact our attorney, who we pay lots of money to be available when we need him to be, um, and we, we make it happen. So, a year ago in October, we let Solon know there was a problem we needed to discuss about the library, and now there's a hunting trip, that's fascinating. So, I actually really would be in favor of allowing a thirty-day interim contract for services for the citizens of Solon Township, um, with a reconstituted board, uh, that the city appoints, that's a non-joint board. And if Solon is able to get back to us before October thirteenth, then we most certainly would welcome their three members that they appoint. Um, and if they decide that they do indeed need an additional thirty days, then at least we have our friends and neighbors covered, so they can still use the library.
Well, and, as all of you know, when I was, um, madly texting out things today and trying to structure this, that was my concern, was how do we make sure that the people in Solon continue to get service while they are not willing to have their attorney or not able to have their attorney look at this for four months? And we can't hire a library director as long as the library board continues to be what it is? Cause Lak, Lakeland will not post it the way that it is with members of the Solon board on that board. So, we tried to see if there was a way we could make that happen. And our attorney said, not really a good idea. Cause you basically have to come up with another contract and have them agree to it, or Solon's people have a lapse in service. So, this is where we got the idea of a thirty-day extension, which is actually sixty.
Right.
Because, and, and my question was, if, what do we need this time for? Like, we've, we've granted the seats on the board that they want. We've, they've agreed on the funding, so what exactly was the concern? And I was told it's because members of their board are on a hunting vacation. And I, I canceled a trip to Miami this summer to see my ninety-year-old aunt, so that I could be here to make this happen. And I'm not advocating that they need to do that, but a four-month vacation, I'm, I'm struggling there. And we can't, the longer we go, the harder it gets to find somebody to be that library director. Library directors are in short supply. I teach in a place that can't hire one, doesn't have any for the entire eleven thousand-student school district and has posted the jobs five times. So, when Kami, who is amazing, applied, two people applied and she's the only one that interviewed, and that was before this. So, I don't know how we get out to February to post this, which is what we're looking at if we don't have a contract and the board continues to be what it is. So, I, to me, that's the struggle. So, thirty days takes us out to November, at which point, I don't, I don't know what else to say, that's, so I'm gonna, that is my comment. Ms. Hamel?
Um, at this point, I'm actually not in favor of any extension whatsoever. Uh, we gave them our offer right, like, the day after we voted to cancel the contract and they didn't respond back for ninety days. So, I'm honestly getting real tired.
Yeah.
Of being the villain here.
I feel you.
I just feel like there's a handful of people who will see wrong in everything that we do and will see Solon as the ones that are not doing anything wrong. Like, every time we come back with an agreement, it's Cedar, why are you doing this? You guys are evil, you're trying to snatch a library from children. That's quite the opposite, as Rose pointed out, we're trying to fund the library for the children. Um, I have three kids of my own and could be home with them right now, but I had to come home from work straight here. So, I don't do this for literally no reason or to be called all kinds of names, to be threatened to be recalled. Like, I do this to try to help the community, and I'm quite tired of just trying to do that and moving forward. And then having a handful of these provisions being not good enough when they apply to both sides. And I feel like people don't know that there's a couple of provisions in there that I wanted to make sure protected Solon on our side. Nobody assumes that. Nobody assumes that. And I've gotten so many more emails from Solon people than Cedar. And how many times have I asked for Cedar residents to tell me whether they think it's unfair? I've literally gotten like three, three.
I've gotten two.
So, I'm getting yelled at every single city council meeting. When I could be with my children, because I'm in the wrong for what? We sent them the agreement, they took ninety days, and now they're asking us to do that for what reason? They didn't even provide one. Sorry, I'm so, I'm so out of patience at this point, I'm so out of patience. I have done my very best to be communicative with everybody and I'm just, like, I give up, I literally give up. I'm trying to have a funded library for people and I give up, I can't do anything right, whatever agreement we have will be incorrect. I'm just at that point, I'm so done. So, no, I will not vote for an extension.
I think.
I, they have had plenty of time.
Kids and feel you, my sixteen-year-old is getting heat.
I, I'm honestly curious, and I don't know this, so I really hope that I am wrong. I, I'm honestly curious, and I don't know this, so I really hope that I am wrong. I wonder how many people are going to Solon at their township meetings and telling them that they're the worst, and they're evil, and they're trying to snatch libraries from people. I hope, I hope that that is the same argument back to them. Just pay the money. Just take the deal. I hope that that is the response. Because I'm so over it. My vote is no on the thirty.
Okay, well, I, I will call for the vote. And by the way, I feel you. I feel you. When my kid came and asked me why someone at school asked him why his mother hates libraries and wants to take libraries away from everyone in a school that doesn't have a library.
Yep.
And that we as a family have donated, he personally donated a hundred dollars of his money for books that were not being allowed to be purchased at the library about people who are autistic. And we've put in, as a family, thousands of dollars for books. And this is what the autistic sixteen-year-old comes home and asks me about. So I, I feel you. I feel you. And you have school-aged kids, you have school-aged kids, you have school-aged kids, I have school-aged kids.
So. And I have a husband that reads a book a week.
And I've read seventy-seven books since January first. That's, I mean, I'm a big reader. I use Book Club to teach in my classroom.
Can we, can we get back?
So, but I'm just saying, this idea that somehow we hate libraries, like, when someone came here and said, you're going to sell the library, or you're going to turn it into City Hall. It's never, ever been anywhere on the agenda. This has always been about trying to get the library funded. Always. So I, I feel you. I feel you. Renee?
Thank you. Um, I feel as frustrated as you do. I mean, we come in here and we're very thankful that you're here, but it's the chatter and the eye rolls and the shaking of the head, and we need to recall these people, and it's like, you know what? Then why don't you bring other people in here? Because I don't hear, I don't ever see anyone else trying to do this. You come and you nod and you smile, and you're like, you have no idea what we've been through. Because you're hearing, you must be just hearing a different side of the story. Because this is going, has been going on for months on YouTube. There's nothing that we've hidden from you. It doesn't make sense to me why this is so hard for Solon to make their decisions. Like, absolutely, we do special meetings, we, we do, we're
Again, away from our families.
Yes. And they want to just keep moving it and moving it. Why?
They have two meetings. They have two meetings a month. They have two meetings a month. We have one.
It's frustrating. I don't understand.
I, I
You know, we're trying, we are trying for the communities.
So what is your feeling on thirty days?
I am not one to budge.
Okay.
I think we're here where we, where we're at.
Okay.
First, I'm going to straighten out something here and now. The whole point, I was asked a question at one point in time about the new library. I am the one that made a comment that would make a real nice City Hall someday. Someday. Okay, the reason for the someday is the apathy. The fact that financing and the love for the library is such a fight to create and keep going. That if it ever was to fail, and we're part of it, and the, the two groups right now are part of what could happen to make the fact that it needs to be fa- or filled with something. The fact that the internet is trying to take over everything, and part of the reasoning for looking at KDL was because of the electronical type things you could do with KDL that we can't do with our library right now.
E-books.
Exactly. There's not much of anything that a person can't get off the internet that they can get through a library, other than they can't carry it home with them and read it.
No.
I'm talking now, okay? This, the whole point is, where are we going as a society? What's going to happen to libraries? I don't know. It was a comment. It was never intended for me to say it will be. I said it could be a very nice City Hall someday. That was the comment. It's been used a couple of different times. Nobody's bothered to ask me why I said that, and that was the reason. Libraries, even KDL is fighting for their life. The reason why they're wanting to go for a ten-year agreement on the next bolt, they have ten years of security. That's it. That's my opinion. We, as a group here with Solon Township, can guarantee that ten years and more if we work together and get this together on both sides and get it done. It can only get better as both of the communities grow. The income is greater, the growth of the library. But we can't get past this without both groups getting together, getting it done. And that's, that's my point. Again, I was the one that said it could be a nobody else on this board, it was me, and it was a point.
Thank you for that, by the way, because I'm the one getting it.
Well, it was never intended for that, and if anybody had ever asked or asked me about it, I'd have told them exactly the same as I'm telling you right now. I'd intended to say it tonight at the, at the closing anyway with my comments. But now is more the appropriate time. Do I want it to go away? No way. That's what's so startling to me right now, is that there's so much disagreement on it and hard feelings that are happening. It never should have happened. And it should not maintain this level of animosity at any degree between the two governmental entities. We need to get it taken care of. Solon needs to get it taken care of, and we need to work together on it. That's all I've got to say. Okay? It's a, it's a case where okay, let's grow up on both sides. Let's get it together. Let's, let's quit taking things, the hurtful things, and looking for the hurt, and look for the betterment. Okay, that's it.
Anything else?
Thank you, everybody.
Hey. I'm gonna cough at the vote unless anybody's got anything else on the thirty-day extension. Ms. Powell?
I would support that motion.
Yes.
Yes. I know, but I'm
In good faith, in good faith, that's why you're saying.
I hold my nose and yes, and they better work it out.
No.
Nope.
Yes.
I, the motion passes. I appreciate your no. I completely understand it, and I respect, and it's hard to vote.
Fine, I vote my, I
I know. I, I'm trying to tell you, though, I I appreciate that. And to be very clear, this is a drop-dead date for me. It's absolutely drop-dead. I am done with people coming with guns. I am done with Nazis. I am done with people showing up at my school. I am done with people talking to my kid. I am, I'm done. I'm done.
Agreed.
I'm done of people telling me I'm selling the library. I'm done with having the police come and tell me that I'm being arrested because of I didn't hold a meeting correctly. We call an open meeting that violation, which we were all supposed to go to jail.
Oh, yes.
I'm, I'm done. Libraries, to me, are like oxygen. There is no world where I would sell this library, use this library for something else. I have given a substantial portion of my time, my money, my volunteer hours. I sat on that library board for eight years. I was on the foundation of the Friends of the Library. I'm done with this idea that somehow I don't care about libraries.
I don't matter.
Started, no, I'm not done. This started
Vote was taken.
It was.
And we should, we may move on, okay?
At the end of this thirty days, I'm done.
Agreed. Where are we on B?
Yes, I believe that brings us to B.
Action B? Or C or whatever.
Which is the City of Cedar Springs Brownfield redevelopment.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty. A resolution approving amendment to the City of Cedar Springs Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Brownfield Plan Boundaries.
I would support that motion.
And that is, that involves the new development out, the apartment development?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Ah, yes.
Just to make it
This is, and just to be clear, this is
This is regarding White Creek Flats, one four three zero zero White Creek Avenue, part of their plan.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, this is the, this is how they're getting part of the pass-through. I started to say Brownfield, but it's, it's, it's this. And Darla is the one who was the finance director when we sat in this room a year ago, a year and a half ago, who figured out the tool to make this work. So, and now she's the city manager that gets to oversee it, so. I think that's fabulous. Yes. Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. I know, but I just want you to say, thank you. I know we continue, and you, you show up every single time. So thank you for that.
Make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three twenty-one. Resolution approving amendment to the City of Cedar Springs Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Brownfield Plan for the White Creek Flats Project.
I would second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Oh, you got
I'm, I'm just glad it's coming in, and it will, uh, make our taxable value increase.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Motion ca- passes.
I am I make the motion to approve the payback agreement with White Creek Flats LLC Development and Reimbursement Agreement with White Creek Flats Land LLC.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Motion passes. Woo-hoo!
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item G, a motion to write off three uncollectible invoices for
Well, we gotta do E.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the purchase of real property, accepting a donation of real property and related matters.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is the new well property?
Right, I was gonna say, this is the, for the new well, and, or is this the water tower?
It's the well.
It's the well.
Okay. Prop, for, the section we're purchasing is for the well. The other section is a donation, kind of in the same area.
Okay. Does the do- isn't the donation for the water tower?
Nope.
Okay, because I was thinking that's from the, okay.
We are so fortunate to have a place where we can put in another well
Yeah.
For our growing city. I'm just, I'm ecstatic about it because we have a well that's just barely working, so we need a new well.
And it, we were all kind of holding our bras. It would come back with, you know, the right numbers, then no PFAS, and no heavy metals, and that it would have a flow rate that we need, and all of the stars aligned.
And they gave us the land. No, did they? Some of it.
Parcel for the well is three point eight three acres. That we need to purchase to continue to put in the new well. The parcel they're donating to us is two point three nine acres.
Okay.
There's a walking path
Right.
Through there that we can
That we can, right, to be able to, yes.
It's wonderful.
Hey, any other discussion? And there, and this will follow up with this. Eventually, we'll need a second water tower, correct? Isn't that a piece of this also over on that side?
Um, that, the location hasn't been determined yet. Future planning item.
Okay, that's a discussion, is my understanding. Okay, so any other discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Race?
Yes.
Mayor Gross?
A ma- major, bleh.
Yes.
You can come be the mayor.
You're next.
I'm retiring.
I make the motion to allow city mayor and city clerk to execute agreement for real property donation and purchase agreement with Sand Lake Company LLC.
Support.
Any discussion?
That's also part of our new well, so you know how I feel about that.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Mayor Conley votes yes. Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yes.
Ms. Race? And Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to
May I ask? Like to thank Mr. Wall for the work that they've done out there and what they're offering. He's in attendance tonight.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
That was my point about the, coming up with the structure for the apartment complex. She's the one that figured out how to make that happen. So we're, we're gonna try. We're gonna try. So moving on to now we're at motion G. Motion to write off three uncollectible invoices for a total of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And Ms. Atchison?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Conley votes yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And we will excuse Ms. Powell. Motion carries.
Okay, then we've done H already, so we're on the discussion.
Discussion items. Cedar Springs Halloween Spooktacular Community Event on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. From five thirty to seven thirty. First review.
Okay, so we're
Discussion items. Mr. Hawkins is coming to talk to us.
Right, thank you.
About a spooktacular. He also spoke to the DDA.
Yes.
It's, um, you know, we've had a rough decade so far. A lot of things haven't gone great. So let's try and have some fun and try and bring as much of our community together to work on some projects that everybody can enjoy. The Halloween Spooktacular. We have a thousand-plus kids every year that come out trick-or-treating just at the downtown stores. That's not counting the trunk-retreatings, the stuff up in the housing developments and that. So why not, since we're already used to Main Street being closed down, just close it down for another day? And have some fun. And we have trunk-retreating down along the center of our Main Street. And it saves having to worry about police and guards being out there, because not everybody crosses at the intersections like we should. I'm not saying that I don't ever. The point is, it'll be safer, even if nobody comes out for the trunk-retreating, it's still gonna be safer for the people coming downtown to trick-or-treat. But if you have trick-or-treating and trunk-retreating in the same spot, and there's other ones that are still doing their trick-or-treating and trunk-retreating in the same town, we're gonna get a lot of people in the community. And we need some good morale.
Um, from a safety perspective, and we talked about this a little bit at DDA, um, Halloween is actually a very dangerous night for kids getting hit by cars. I was surprised when I learned those statistics. But the more that we can keep everything in this area, the safer it makes it.
Well, and we start out in daylight. Next thing you know, it's dark. So that, there is where the gray line comes into safe, not safe, because everybody doesn't wear costumes that are specific for the dark. They want their costume to be seen.
Well, and the next piece is also, um, and I found this having
Well, and the next piece is also, um, and I found this having been the person that hands out candy here at City Hall the last several years. That when we do it in this kind of, um, community environment where it's out with the businesses. That whole families go trick or treating.
Mm-hmm.
And you don't have to like keep someone at home to hand out candy. And we can have like people who are adults who might still wanna dress up, it's okay. You don't have that whole like, what about the kid who's aged out or your folks with disabilities who are still really committed to Halloween? But some people see this, you know, big tall six foot tall person and say, oh, you shouldn't. Because it becomes just acceptable for everyone to participate. And I really appreciate that aspect of it.
One of the funnest things, actually, I realized today I didn't put in the application. Uh, I don't know how I missed that, until I was like, well, gotta make sure, well, shit, I didn't put that, I mean crap, put that in there. Well, Green family of friends, Cordell Green and his family and friends, that they normally put on the pumpkin giveaway. Well, they wanna still do the Halloween contest, you know, the, the dress up contest, but also for the trunk retreating. And well, that's supposed to be here at the corner of Ash, I mean, did I put that on the map? I'm like, no, I didn't put it in the application. So, I wanted to make sure.
It was the city manager.
We would like to amend the application.
Oh, I really appreciate this. Any other questions on this?
Um, Sergeant Probst said he is looking for an event type light. To have, to have in the street before the event, so that people will know there's something going on and to beware. And I do believe it is a digital display. To, um.
Like, from, from the county, yeah.
Yeah, from the county.
To, to use one from the Kent County Sheriff's.
Yes.
He would bring.
Does it have a big clock on it we use for the ball drop?
We'll have to talk to him.
Conversation with Sergeant.
Anyway, he's hoping he can, um, wrangle one up. I, I don't know if you guys are in on this or not, but. The, I, I happened to mention, I saw that the Kent County, or the Montcom County Sheriff Department had one at Howard City. When they had their, uh, mains big, well, one thir- old, one thirty-one closed off. Cuz that was pretty unusual, but I didn't get to see what it said, but I was pretty impressed about the effect that it's portable. And it was, uh, very much needed for all the folks that were in the road. So, hopefully we can get that by Spooktacular, and I am really thrilled about this, it's gonna be great.
I know, I love Halloween.
Who doesn't like Halloween?
I know, I don't know.
The dentists, they sure love it.
We, uh, my daughter's having her wedding anniversary that night, so.
She get married?
Yeah, so we'll be all ready to go.
For the third time.
Oh, gosh. Spicy.
Hey, it's fun to guess.
Anyway, do you need anything else from us?
No, no, do you need anything from me, really?
I think that would be a conversation to have with the city manager and beyond that with, um, the Kent County Sheriff slash Sergeant Probst. As you figure out street closings and, but, um, and we try to hear things twice. But, um, I think in general, we're supportive.
General yay.
Sounds like a good time.
Yes, it does, a real good time.
It's a discussion item, and then are you the, the New Year's Eve?
Yeah, so I just basically on both of these, I'm.
Well, do you have any other questions about the, before I move on to New Year's Eve, any other questions?
Basically, I just kinda wanna make sure it's a straw poll, that you're okay with, we have as long as everything's safe, so that we can get the Facebook event rolling and. Trunk retreaters.
Yay.
Yes, I mean, do you want me to do a full?
As amended.
As amended with your little.
Yes, you, with the caveat that you have to fill out all the maps and you have to talk to the police and, but we are definitely.
Things, yes.
Yeah, but we are supportive of paying police to keep people safe, that's the thing we do, so. So, good?
Yep, good on that one.
Okay, moving on to item B, Sears, New Year's Spring, springing, springing Eve? New Year's.
Sears, New Year's Springing Eve. It's one word short of Dick Clark's New Year's Rockin' Eve.
Okay. I'm not gonna tell you how to do it, but I'm just gonna say that doesn't roll off the tongue. It's fine. I mean, you do you.
If we all have a couple of beverages, nothing.
That's true.
This was another one that the idea was like, well, let's tie the end of the year, you know, with another big bang, you know? Get the downtown businesses involved, have a moonlight, uh, year-end sale. And, uh, the brewery is, uh, willing to be open and do refreshments and some minor appetizers, they're not gonna have a full kitchen or anything like that. Uh, we'd.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask, has the DDA like come around on this?
Yeah.
Last I talked to the, when I was at the last meeting, they were not so much feeling it, not because they were.
Well, it was kinda like half and half, because the idea is that there's, this Cedar Springs is kind of a bedroom community, is the way some people gotten since it's. Pretty much since twenty twenty, that nothing really happens here after nine o'clock.
On New Year's Eve.
Yeah, well, it's cuz we don't really have anything for them here. Most people, they wanna go to a ball drop or go watch a ball drop or whatever, so. We're trying to ball drop and having your businesses open and having the social district, which I believe, do believe the social district gets. Done at eight or ten normally.
Ten.
Then, that's one thing that we'd like to be able to have that extended until twelve thirty.
Yeah, I mean, I, that makes sense to me.
And we're working on ways of making it safe, cuz I know that there is a hiccup in things with it being after dark. And the difference in the, uh, barricades and stuff that are needed.
Weather, I know is one of the concerns.
Well, it's Michigan, it's home in twelve.
Trying to have everybody outside.
Likely to be cold.
Right.
Anywhere.
It could be snowing, it could be sleeting.
Anywhere though.
It'd be the coolest event all year.
Amen.
I think it sounds really fun. I'm, I'm certainly not opposed, I mean, I said that at the DDA meeting, I'm not opposed.
As long as we got everything in.
As long as all the safety things and blah, 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 go forth and fa, fa, fa.
And I think one of our questions was, um, is it difficult to get policing on New Year's Eve? Okay. Cuz there are some things for when it's hard. Oh, cuz that was one of my questions on Halloween and Todd was like, oh no, my kids are old.
Record it.
Yeah, are short, can we hire Keystone cops to fill in for? So, same thing, same straw poll.
Go for it, yeah.
Thanks for putting an effort. I'll, I'll go down and, are, are you supportive?
Sure. Yes.
I am?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
Yeah.
Ms. Gross?
Thank you.
Yeah, here, I said.
You good? You get what you need? Communications, I need to add, and I don't, I didn't, I should have printed it. I will forward it. We have been getting, um, Dr. Halan. I gotta get her last name. Who is a genetic biologist at Grand Valley, has a group of grad students. And they have a grant, and they have been testing our wastewater.
Yes.
For COVID.
Yeah.
And flu, and I think they've added encephalitis. As part of a public health, and then they post it on the public health web pages, along with like Michigan State University. I, she happens to be like a friend, and so I was able, I said, when they were doing this with their grad students. And I said, if you get another spot, and she popped us in, well, they've gotten the grant renewed. And they just would like to know that it's acceptable to extend. And so when you get that little thing in your email where it says like Gary at the such and such says, and that's what that is. So, she just needs, uh, and I can forward it on to you, she sent it to me this morning. And there was a couple other things. And so I didn't get it, but, um, just, I think that's a really wonderful thing. And our wastewater treatment plant folks think it's really cool too.
Yes, Jerry would.
He, he, he like periodically contacts me to tell me how cool it is, so, because, you know.
Well, it's, it's predictive of increased community spread, so when you see those numbers start to increase. Often that is when people in the community are not yet symptomatic.
Correct.
And so, fore, forewarned is forearmed, and so you can sanitize more and wear a mask or do whatever you feel is necessary to protect.
And they're, they're doing COVID, flu. I think there's four, I need, I'll, I'll send the email, but I said I would put it in the communications tonight, cuz she's like, do you need to vote? Or you're continuing a thing we've been doing? Um, I said, I don't think so, but I'll put it in the community. The correspondence, so I will make sure that gets forwarded on, cuz it was coming to the previous city manager, I don't know if it continued. It might have.
I've never seen anything.
I will forward it, and I will forward it to the rest of the people on council also. And she's a rock star. Biology, chemistry, geneticist person, who's, and it's the grad students that are doing it. As part of their grad work and they have a grant, and the, and all of the data is ongoing posted through the Health Department for the state of Michigan. And it is posted like on a map. And you can see all of the places that are participating and all of the data, so like you can see when there's a spike at Michigan State, you can see. So, there's, yeah, it's, it's, the nurse, I think, would appreciate this. So, that's my piece of correspondence I need to add. And then beyond that, community event calendar, calendar. Um, lawful non-conforming properties that signed on. Any other, like, I, I can go down the communications, anything specific anyone wants to comment on. Historical society, we have such a wonderful history museum, it's gonna be open during Red Flannel. If you haven't been over there, pop over there, it's really quite fabulous.
Is, and all of their people who work over there know different pieces of our history?
Yes.
And can talk about really like specific and interesting things, like I talked to a gentleman who used to do the mail from the railroad. And he was able to tell us all about that, and I, yeah, it was very cool. And so it kinda depends on who's working when you go, so you should go often, so you can talk to all of them.
I had a lovely conversation once upon a time about my house. And how my house was built in eighteen forty, and it's, they're like, oh, I know exactly where your house is. And there's a map that's pencil drawn, and my house in your old house is on it. It's quite fabulous. So, yes, um, Jade Farms, oh, Skinner Field, I think we have that, you don't need any further action, correct? And then NKCE, the Chamber Potential Business Park Costs. The NKCE Audit and Department Reports. City Manager.
Um, so I just wanted to add a couple things, I wanna officially welcome our new finance director, Emily Landon, she's been with us two days.
Apparently processes taxes very well.
She's doing her job already, look at that. Um, uh, Red Flannel Festival is looking to see if, um. We are gonna have City Hall open on Red Flannel Day, October seventh.
We usually try to do that, and we each take a shift, I've always taken the shift during.
That's still the plan?
That is my.
Okay.
I, I literally had a conversation though with my son where he asked if I would be safe.
Oh, ah.
I do, I usually do a shift too.
I've.
All right.
In the past also. I'll let him know, thank you for that. Um, Red Flannel Breakfast, I sent you that email, if you haven't seen it yet, please.
I usually try to pop in.
An hour.
Okay, cuz I've, I've been not going to the full breakfast, I've been going in and saying.
So much fun.
Thank you.
And then having to leave early.
To go be teacher.
If you'd like to attend, just let me know, I can RSVP as a group for all of you. Um, Main Street Project, uh, progress meeting this past Tuesday, they are on schedule.
Yay.
They are rocking this project out, let me tell you.
Out there working on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Ten to seven.
Yeah.
Which is when the director of the project stopped me on the way in to tell me that he just moved here.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, very, very good news, we are staying on top of that, it, it'll be fabulous when it's done. Um, just wanted to give a kudos to teams of Skinner Field, that's the new lease group that's taken over Skinner Field, Skinner Field. They are rocking this, let me tell you, I'm getting texts and emails almost every day. Um, they moved a section of the bleachers, where those bleachers were, they put down, um, wood chips. They were looking for picnic tables, I said, take a couple from Morley Park, it's, you know, there's still plenty in Morley Park. Um, so that's there at their entrance, uh, they had games last Saturday. The toilet's plugged.
Oh.
Of course.
So, we had to move a couple Porta-Jons over there, they'll be using Porta-Jons again this weekend, because we had a plumber over there today, there is a block. We are working on it, so we're, we're helping the best we can, um, so every Saturday football will be going on there.
On term, if we need like more picnic tables, we should look at putting that in the budget.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, as I told those folks, this is a city piece of property, we maintain city pieces of property.
I asked DPW today to order a sign that says kind of our same white with the red, City of Cedar Springs on the top with Skinner Field. To be put at the entrance there. Um, they have a seven-member board, they, they're just already organized beyond belief, so I just wanna give kudos to them.
Well, if I could, I noticed in their, their presentation. They're looking at seeing what they were gonna charge the public for using the park. They're gonna have to be under the understanding it is a public park.
Right.
They can't charge for everything that goes in there, uh, basically the charging used to be for the use of locker rooms, the.
Oh, sure.
And things of that nature, the concession stand is still a public park.
Right.
Oh, but, uh, you might wanna remind them of that.
Yeah, we'll do that. That was all I had.
Okay. DPW, Bill?
Tanya.
Oh, Tanya.
It was on the island again.
It says Bill.
Now, I, I don't have anything.
Okay, forgive me for not knowing that it's Tanya instead of Bill, because it says Bill and a blue.
That's fine. Up and unfound today, so.
We'll blame Bill, it's fine.
I'm sure it's Bill somehow. And the, the city, the city looks wonderful. So, you're doing a great job, I know you were out marking like where we're gonna put trees post sidewalk project and. It, it's really quite fabulous.
Well, thank you, takes all of us to do it.
And probably some more than what you have.
Yeah.
Police Department.
I have a lot to report from our end, it's pretty, a pretty average month, and I know, certain folks put hard on the plan, all the details on that.
Wonderful, and we continue to be thrilled with your new facility here and. The public health piece of it is valuable too, I've had a couple people ask me about going to get flu shots and going to get COVID shots and.
The presence of your officers around the area have been duly noted by a lot of people. The number of cruisers there are around town, so, uh, reciprocal for it, the, the. It falls down and it benefits us is, is great also, I appreciate that.
There are less general shenanigans in the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
The general shenanigans.
Oh, because it's ongoing, there's always some teenage boy yelling about something, but there's less of that now in the middle of the night. It is, but there's less, so thank goodness.
Fire Department. Marty or?
I'm still, I'm still learning in this thing, uh, can you guys hear me?
We can, we can.
I, I have a couple of things I'd like to mention, and I have to disagree with the mayor. Um, as far as the town looking beautiful, Main Street's a mess.
That is, that is fair.
Um, I would like to welcome Mrs. Landon, um, I will see her Monday at staff. I've known Emily for a few years, uh, her husband used to be on the fire department. Um, moving on real quickly, uh, as you can see by my report, we've been, been extremely busy this year. Um, I'm, I'm not sure what's going on. It's not an age group, it's not one particular sickness. Uh, we're over six hundred calls already for this, this year, and we. Uh, we're over six hundred calls already for this, this year, and we have three and a half months to go. So I'm not sure what's going to happen. However, I would like to thank the council and especially, um, the city manager, um, for working with me. And getting a full-time firefighter. Um, he's working out very, very well. And I want to put a bug in your ear. Um, next budget meeting, I may be looking for a second one.
Sure. No, that makes sense.
What can I say?
I'm not going to sit here and say that Mr. Gross was right. I will not do. However, um, it's working out so well and our call volume just, um, with the new developments going on, uh, Prairie Run North and the White Creek flats up there. Uh, it's, I can justify it.
Unfortunately, someone did some maths.
There was math.
There was some maths about what kind of pass through we needed for those to make that feasible. So we hear, we, we expected that, Mr. Gross, if you remember.
Yep.
And Ms. Fraser, if you remember, you were at that meeting.
I was in the backseat singing. I don't remember that. However, I'm, I'm going to part, um, my comments and, uh, again, thank the council and city hall staff. Darla Rebecca, um, DPW. And I'm yet waiting to work with, uh, Mrs. Landon. We'll see how that goes. Thank you.
I think that was maybe on Mr. Gross's end.
Sounded like a call.
That's what I was going to say.
Might have been on his.
Marty's, Mr. Fraser's.
Oh, Mr. Fraser, yeah. Mr. Fraser's then.
But I take the blame for a lot of things.
City clerk.
Um, I'll keep it brief tonight. Um, just wanted to welcome Emily. Welcome to the team. And if you guys have not met April yet, she is the deputy clerk slash finance director, deputy clerk finance director.
And aren't you supposed to not be here?
So.
Aren't you on vacation?
I wasn't supposed to be here. So April was here, but, um, we felt it was important for me to be here.
Okay. Cause I swear you're on vacation. Like you're on vacation.
So.
She's not here.
I, but I want to, we want our people to take their vacation time.
Whole thing. We had an entire meeting.
Yes.
Don't worry, I'll be off next week.
Okay, okay.
I'm glad you're here. You're fabulous.
I mean, we love you. I don't want to be sound.
I understand.
I, I really did read the thing that said you were on vacation.
So the only other thing I would add is, um. Just to keep it in your guys' mind with prop two, um, there will be a lot of changes with election. To the extent we are, we're not even sure right now. Legislature hasn't determined all of that. Um, just wanted to put it in your ear that. As we've had election change, we've had little changes here and there. Things have been added, things have been changed, but we've not seen a change to election law this significant since nineteen fifty. So with that being said, I have an ask for you guys. I don't normally ask much. Um. Uh, with nine days of early voting, we need to be able to staff the polls. So if you have, um, friends, neighbors. Anybody who is willing to learn elections, go through, sit through a training, um, and sit with us for those nine days. Please send them my way. I have applications they can fill out.
Do they have to be available for all nine days?
No, no, we haven't figured that out quite yet, but likelihood of getting three people available for nine days is going to be near impossible. Which just complicates elections a little bit further.
Can they sit on appointed boards of other kinds?
Yes, they cannot be related to anyone running on the ballot.
Right. But I mean, we could go.
Yep.
Ask people from other DDA, from the planning commission, from the.
Registered to vote. So that's my ask for you guys. If you have interested people, we're going to start planning now.
Eighteen registered to vote citizen of the city.
They do not have to be of city limits. They can be anywhere.
Oh, so an eighteen year old or older registered voter, not an immediate family member of anyone on the ballot.
You can be younger than eighteen, but because it's going to be during school hours, it's going to be.
Unlikely to be practical.
Okay. Can you do some, make something else for Facebook?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't know if like maybe older girl scouts during. Like school dismisses it two forty? If you had some like eagle scout.
History teachers or something might offer like extra credit for like the eighteen year old seniors that can volunteer maybe.
Yeah, we've, we've had that in the past where teachers will do that. It just, it makes it a little difficult when you have two people during the day because then you have to do a lot of changing the poll book and. It doesn't add a layer of complexity. We're not opposed to it, but, um, we'll do what we have to do to get, make sure that the days are staffed. So. Have people put them in my way or get applications.
I'll try to.
And thank you to the people who have already said that they would.
Okay. Finance director, treasurer. Days now? Do you have anything to report on your two days? You, you are very effective. Uh, pay, having people pay their taxes. Wonderful.
Perfect.
The due date today. So yeah, very busy with tax payments yesterday and today. So that was good to see that process. So feel like I started at a good time. Learned a lot in the first two days and I appreciate everyone's patience. Everyone's been so great and willing to help me and appreciate everybody welcoming me here.
Wonderful. We're very happy to have you. And.
There is a plus also.
Sure.
He's local.
Yay.
Okay. She has been committed to the area. So.
What we like.
I, I think most of our. Our clerk or we got local people here all over the place. Code enforcement, anything? Special building inspection, boarding commission minutes, North Kent County, um, enrichment and the Cedar Springs Public Library Board. I have a lot of people tell me that they struggle to find the library board minutes on the library board. On the, on the library website. I don't know if we need to like cross supply a link. I don't know. Like to our page. I don't know.
Well, they used to get emailed to us regularly.
Right.
Hadn't happened for a while.
Yeah, that, that.
Lack of communication.
Yeah. Well, and I think it stopped like basically when Kami and they.
Yeah.
Again, don't have an interim.
Right. Yeah.
So and I totally respect that, um. The people trying to keep the lights on.
Right.
Are not doing that. But I, when they do do it, like it can be there, but it's hard to find. If you go looking, because I've had a lot of people asking me about it. And I don't know if, that's where I was saying, like, I didn't know if we could put it, like just cross supply it to our page to make it.
When we have them, they're part of our packet.
Yeah.
We're, we don't do anything with their website or, you know, the library's Facebook. That's.
Yeah. I wasn't even thinking Facebook. I was just, it, they're on their website and if we could like copy the link and put it on ours. You just have to dig. It's not easily found. It's. I, it was more time than I had to commit to trying to solve that as a problem when it was brought to me.
But you can look into it.
Yeah. Um. Council comments.
Well, red flannel day is on its way. Um, the brochures unfortunately are running a little late. I'm hoping to have them by tomorrow or. There's just been a complication. The normal guy that has done it for years and years passed away. So it was handed down to a new person and it's been kind of slow. But anyways, uh, Prince and Princess is coming up. If you don't even have a kid in the show, you should go. It's one of the, it's just a remarkable event and we really enjoy it. The parade is of course Saturday at three o'clock. I'm going to have the lumberjacks this year. The, uh, clown band, um, all kinds of wonderful things. And at the, at, the clown band's going to go to the grand lodge after the parade. And play there at the grand lodge. And at some point in time when we can squeeze it in, we will have the annual Red Hawk reunion there. And, uh, people of anybody that's graduated from Cedar Springs or is a Red Hawk is invited to come and participate and it's getting more and more popular every year. And we have folks that have graduated a year ago up until, we've had people there that graduated sixty-five years ago. It's just amazing. Coming in their school sweaters and it, it's quite fun. So if you can stop in there. And, um, of course we all know there's all kinds of things going on craft show, marketplace, uh, car show is huge. That's why we're kind of, uh. Paying an homage to the car show that brings a ton of people to town. And, uh, hopefully unless it rains, because these guys don't take these classic cars out of it's even going to look like rain. So anyways, I'm looking forward to that. And we all, the, the board, uh, what a wonderful group of people who have absolutely dedicated themselves to this festival. And they always amaze me every year. I try to do what I can to support them, but I couldn't keep up with these guys in a million years. Eighty-four. Yeah, eighty-four. And our grand marshal Penny is, uh, um. A great representative for the folks who support the red flannel festival for many, many years.
She's worked with the Queens pageant.
Everything, yeah.
Worked up at the school and.
Everything. She's a great gal. So anyway, that's all I got to say.
Mr. Gross.
Been a troubling time.
Yes.
And I believe we can work through all of it. And I hope. And, uh, I'm counting on the fact that the library gets it all pulled together. Not only from the Solon side, our side, and it continues on. I. Have voiced my opinion before on what in the direct, what direction I felt it should go. And I, I'm perfectly content. With the idea that it stays a community library. But that's my personal opinion, but I, I do believe that it does need to be a library. For the public. It's, it's a case where it would probably be more convenient for a lot of people in Nelson Township also. But the fact that they voted with KDL the last time around. They're kind of committed to those, but, uh, I, I'm not sure how that would work out for them. And there may be some people that come in for events anyway. So, and I hope so. Uh. It has led to a lot of frustration. And sometimes there's words that are said that probably shouldn't be said. Or implied that shouldn't have been implied. But at the same token, uh, we're all pulling for it. So, uh. Hopefully everything goes well. I, I think the move with Friends of Skinner Field. Although I was part of, uh, the Friends of Skinner Field for a long time. And they did a good job. I think there was some support problems that they didn't have towards the end. Uh, I think the change in the. Organization for controlling it is a definite positive. And again, that's not knocking anybody that was still there trying to make it work. There was just. And whatever the reasons was, they just weren't getting volunteers for it anymore. So, uh. Having been said, that's enough. And again, I did make the comment about the library. I don't take it back. And nobody bothered to ask me why it was said. And they can take it for whatever it was. It was not intended. Ever believed that should be replaced by city hall. It was for the reasons that I said that I was concerned. And then it just couldn't sit there empty. So, but, uh. Anyway, that's it for me.
Ms. Grace.
I just, I'm tired. So I just, I just hope that we just can get this figured out so we can all. Go on our merry ways and enjoy the beautiful library that we have. Congratulations, Emily. Thank you so much for all the work that you've been doing lately. Um, obviously you're there too. A right hand, I would have to say, you know. But, and welcome to you too. And, uh, thank you for being here.
Ms. Samuel.
Um, I think I've said enough today.
You, you get it coming.
I'm good.
Um. Just. Still amazed by our wonderful staff that we have and barely rocking it and welcome. And it was great to meet you. I would hear about you all the time, but we don't necessarily get to see you. So this was nice. Thanks for coming and thanks for being in our town. We appreciate it. Um. Yeah, I hope that we can get the, the library figured out. And, um. I too am perfectly fine with keeping the library, community library. I. Do not believe that our community wants it to be anything else. I think it wants to, it to be a community library. Um. I do know personally that as much as we've talked about the library, um. And as much flack as Mayor Conley has been taking, that she generally. Um, believes in the library and loves the library. And. One person's. Way of trying to get. It to stay open. Can make the other community members not happy. And once again. Like Molly said, it, Ms. Nixon said, it's. That's where this all started was trying to keep the library funded and open. We want it open. We want it funded. We want a library. I mean. That be, that building is beautiful. Um, the, the events are awesome. Um, so let's keep working toward it and get it, let's get this figured out. You know, we, we all are tired. Thank you.
Ms. Nixon.
Understanding that perceptions are not necessarily reality. It feels on this side to me. That I am working harder for the residents of Solon than the Solon Township Board. That I am considering their needs and wants and saying, these are our friends, our family members and our neighbors. And we don't want to leave them out in the cold. And where is Solon? That brings me to the next thing. When I was first elected, one of the things I talked about was being recorded. You know what? Because some sunshine will do a world of good. There's been some things that maybe I've said that were wrong and it's on tape and well, it lives forever. But you know what? I'm in government and I get to be held accountable. So at that time, we could do a grainy recording upload to YouTube for under a hundred bucks at the speed of shipping.
That's right.
So today, right now, that was twenty fourteen. Today you can do a grainy recording upload to YouTube. For thirteen dollars at the speed of shipping. So I want you, everyone to consider. If your local board, whoever they are, is not recording their meetings, if they are not making it available, you should ask them why. Because I spend more a week in coffee. Than this costs. There is not a reason. Everyone's on YouTube. There is not a reason. And if you have a local board that is not recording their meetings, is making it hard to find the minutes, you should ask them why. Because it's not a cost issue.
Here, here.
I, I have a lot, but I'm going to try to not. I'm just going to say. I have not went grocery shopping by myself in this community in six months. I have been poked. I have been hit. I have been spit at. My kid has been. Borderline threatened. I have had a Nazi here. I have had a, an actual Nazi. I have had a man with a gun. I have had a whole plethora of people from Solon Township coming to me, sending me pictures of notes that they took at those meetings and wanting to know. Where do they find those minutes? Where do they find those notes? Where do they find the library minutes? Why can't, why isn't this available? And I have zero power and authority to make any of that happen. Any. We have offered our facility to any of our local, the DDA, the chamber. We've said to the library, if you would like to come in and use our recording equipment. When I was first on council, we helped fund recording equipment in the library. So it could be done from there. And we've been told again and again, they don't want it. I don't know how to fix that. And then they come here and show up at my house and call me on my cellphone and show up at my school and yell at my secretary that I need to do something or I need to not do something that I am or am not doing. And I don't know how to fix that. But there's a limit. There's a limit. I mean, that's, and we try to be very open. We post full packets, we have discussions in public, we have discussions that we could have in closed session with an attorney in public. We make every contract, every offer, public. I don't, I don't know how to be more transparent and I don't know how I can make other people be transparent. But I'm done being assaulted. I'm done. So, that's what I got. And with that, we're adjourned.